Hi, call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, September 23rd, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there was a few items in the table file.
Yes, there were some personnel items, including a few appointments, a few increased, decreased, change in assignment, and one leave of absence. And in addition, we have an addition to the discussion and report section. Director of Student Services, Special Services Cheryl Hall will share with you some information about the proposal for some additional non-licensed special education PCA time at Longfellow and at Greenville Park. Again, no decision being asked for this evening, but giving you just an opportunity here tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's an objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
And it's a pretty straightforward one this evening because we have no announcements or recognitions.
The school year is just starting to roll. So, board members, anything anyone else would like to add? No? Okay. Then we will quickly move on to our first item for discussion and report, and we're pleased to welcome our district youth council co-chairs, Alex Zhang and Jeff Rizzo, who will present an outline of the district youth council's progress and their goals going forward, and we're excited. This is, I believe, the earliest you've ever been before the board, already September. So, kudos for getting so organized, and it's just really fun to have an opportunity to see you so early on in the school year. So, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Rizzo, a senior this year.
And I'm Alex Zhang, and I'm also a senior, and we are the co-chairs this year. So, this is our team this year. As you can see, we have 16 members.
Yeah, so of those, six of our members are returning, 10 are new members, and we have five seniors, six juniors, and five sophomores. We started off this year, we had an introductory meeting where we got to get to know each other and talk about issues that we cared about. So, that was really interesting.
So, we wanted to start off by introducing our subcommittees. So, our structure is that we have three subcommittees with areas that we really want to focus on. And the first subcommittee we have is the Diversity Subcommittee. And one of our goals is that we recognize that there are a lot of diverse experiences with the students in NHS, and that we really want to, we really think that one of our goals is to make sure that all of these students with different backgrounds feel supported in the school. So, that's one of the goals of our Diversity Subcommittee.
Yeah, and secondly, David continues to show that students are anxious and stressed out, and so DYC and the Mental Health Subcommittee wants to continue to have conversations about what can be done to ease these stressors and ensure that the mental health needs of Northfield students are met.
Yeah, and then our third subcommittee is the Administration Subcommittee. And one of the things that we strongly believe in is that students should definitely have a say in decisions that affect them indirectly or directly, but a lot of the time, they don't really know what's going on. So, one of the goals of this group is to make sure that the student body does know what's going on so that they can give helpful feedback.
So, here are some of our upcoming projects for our subcommittees this year.
So, the Diversity Subcommittee is working on this Integration Data Summit where students from all over the district, so like different schools like Erbo and Red Wing, will come together and they'll examine data on diversity, like test scores and things like that, and have discussions where we will later take info on that and figure out, and connect like the different schools. And then another thing is that we are going to look over the Minnesota Student Survey results to see how students from different backgrounds are feeling, if they're feeling included, test results and things like that. And then finally, we also have members, several members sitting on the Equity Team, so they'll be able to directly know what's going on with the administration and to directly give their feedback on that.
Yeah, so the Mental Health Subcommittee is going to be gathering feedback for the, talking about later start times and seeing how students feel about that. And they're going to continue researching mental health resources that are available at the high school and in the community and making sure that students are connected to those. And then finally, as Alice said, we took the Minnesota Student Survey last year, and that's a lot of information to be analyzed, a lot of useful things to look over. So, we'll be doing that as well.
Yeah, and then finally, so the Administration Subcommittee, one of their major goals is to have students definitely aware of what's going on with the school district, with things that, like the facilities and things like that. So, they're going to be working on this board on the side of the wall over there, where students will be walking past it every day and so that they can check it out and see, oh, what's going on, like what happened at the last school board meeting and things like that. And then another thing they want to do is just generally working on increasing the connection between the administration and the student body.
Yeah, so in addition to the work that we do in our subcommittees, this will be the second year that DYC members will be serving on various district and school committees. And it's, being able to serve on these committees is something that is really great for DYC. We get to be able to add youth voice to meaningful decisions, and it was really great last year, and we hope that it's really great again. I had the opportunity to serve on the Policy Committee with a few of you, and it was really informative and really a great experience.
Yeah, my first year, I served on the Wellness Committee, and it was really cool because they kept asking for my feedback. And I also, I mean, and I also got to, not in addition to giving my voice, I also got to learn about a lot of the things that were going on in the various elementary schools with like the different kinds of snack options they were offering. And yeah, it was really cool to listen to these things.
So, thank you, guys.
Excellent. Wonderful overview. Thank you. Questions or comments if you have time to get to have those from board members? So, any board member have question or comment? No?
Good report, and thank you for the update. And it's always fascinating to see things from your perspective. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Hillman.
I would just like to share with board members and folks in the audience how far we've come, I think, in just a couple of years with really giving what I think is authentic input to our students. It wasn't all that long ago that we didn't have any of the DYC members on any district committees, and really, it was just the DYC, you know, talking about issues but really not having a true vehicle to provide input. And so, you know, I just really want to commend both Alice and Jack, you know, I served on the Policy Committee with Jack, and for those of you on that committee, you know that he gave some really insightful feedback even as we were going through, you know, some pretty mundane kind of policy things. And so, I think it just goes to show that when we give students an opportunity to participate in the process, they can share, you know, some very insightful, meaningful feedback. And I just, I remember Alice asking one of the, could you serve on the Wellness Committee for a second year because you found it so interesting? And again, I think that that's something that the rest of the student body doesn't always get a chance to see, and the DYC continues to improve its role as trying to be a communicator of that to your fellow students. So, I really think in a short time, we've gone from having where, you know, the DYC was really an internal organization, we're really just focused on talking within each other, to where when you attend a meeting, they're giving updates, but when they're on these committees, if you've served on a committee with them, it's not passive. I mean, it's a contact sport, and the people are involved, and they're making sure that they provide feedback. So, I think, I really think we're on the leading edge of providing authentic student voices. Not fake student voice, it's real student voice. And so, these two folks are just outstanding representatives of that.
Thank you.
So, I had a couple of comments. First, Ellen Iverson, board member Iverson is not able to be here tonight, but she, I know, is the school lady's on working with you, so we thank Ellen for her great work. And I'm sure she would be here. And she had made a comment to me over, was it just the beginning or end of the summer that you met, I think, as a group? And she said that energy and enthusiasm was just off the charts. So, it was really good. So, we expect really, we know you're really launching this school year in the best way possible, and so we're really looking forward to that. I was really excited to hear that you are looking at meetings to post information because your district youth council members are so amazing at coming to board meetings. You have two sitting there tonight, and I'm always marvel at how late into the evening they're able to stay, and I think you're at school all day, you have to be tired, but they, they're engaged and they, and they take it all in. So, it's really great that you have found a means of being able to post that information. You know, communication is, and telling people what's going on is a challenge, it's a struggle. We struggle as a school district with that. So, I know that's probably something that you struggle with as well. We know all this, how do we, how do we get the student body to know this as well? So, I really appreciate that. So, I think that's, those were my comments. I think that I really appreciate the committees. I think there's a lot of different areas you could go. I think your focus is, is well-placed with these committees, and I know you'll do great work this year. So, hopefully, you will come back at some other point in the school year and give us an update because we would really love to have you present anytime you are able.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and have fun with homecoming week.
I think they're off to a youth bank meeting, so there is enough.
Of course, of course. Excellent, amazing. Well, thank you very much. All right, so we will move on to our next item for discussion, which is the alternative bus stop proposal. Jenna Dartis, Benjamin Bus Manager, was hoping to be here tonight to present along with Dr. Hillman. She was unable to attend, so Dr. Hillman will be presenting the information that was in our packet.
I'm for two in a row, so I figured I would just come up here and get comfortable.
Sure.
So, again, as Julie mentioned, Jenna Dartis from Benjamin Bus was going to attend with me this evening, however, some, she had another event that prevented her from being here. So, again, as you know, we are committed to being a district that not just talks about continuous improvement, but one that really tries to live it. We always learn from every situation that we have and through reflective inquiry and saying, how could we do things better? And it's one of those things that I can't re-wish politician shared, but the old adage that you never waste a good crisis. And this alternate bus stops due to poor road conditions is an example of that. So, as I outlined in the packet, really what we're talking about is providing alternate bus stops that can give another option to keep school open while safely transporting students to school when some rural gravel roads are not yet safe enough for bus traffic. So, as you know, in the 2018-19 school year, we had experience with nearly every phenomena of weather, including tornadoes and downed power lines, the polar vortex hitting, I had to go back and actually look at what the National Weather Service had recorded for our lowest temperatures back in late January, early February, and we know that the air temperature got below negative 30 degrees Fahrenheit. And so, we learned about that ability, of course, to reliably run school buses and something I had not really known a lot before about the gelling of diesel fuel despite the fact that they have additives. And so, we have learned quite a bit. And then, we had a little bit of snow, as you know, last winter. And then in addition, we learned something really from the freeze-thaw cycle in the spring, especially when it's about rural roads and how when even in the spring, you think you're past the winter and it gets warm during the day enough to start melting the snow and things off the road, and then freezes overnight, and now we got another whole set of problems. So, the alternate bus stops actually came as a result of that spring thaw-free cycle. And we had a couple of, we had a couple of bus routes in some rural townships where there was not the ability to sand or salt the roads. So, the roads were literally ice. I saw a video of a, of a parent actually ice skating from his front door to get the mail and back. It was not something where we could get buses down that road, and we had the very unfortunate requirement to call some of these parents and say, we're really sorry, we cannot get a bus down your road today. And of course, you know, that, that's just not acceptable. We had a parent who said, hey, if you can get a bus to the corner of this road, we'd be happy to get him up there on a snowmobile, literally what the person said. So, Benjamin Bus did quick work, and within one day, they created what we called alternate bus stops, which are on a paved road, an intersecting paved road to a gravel road that may not be passable or safe for a bus to travel at the time. So, we are looking to formalize this this year with a, probably a deeper pilot. What Benjamin Bus, after talking with Jenna today, is suggesting is that they have identified, using data, they have identified the five bus routes that have had, most often had issues like the ones that I've described here this evening. You'll see in the packet, there's a sample graphic of what the card would look like that would go to families. And sometime in October or early November, the families who are on these five bus routes where they potentially would have an alternate stop will get the card, explains the why behind it, which is really important. We're trying to get kids to school as many days as possible. And then, in addition, it would explain, you know, where the bus, the alternate bus stop would be and what the approximate time for pickup would be. So, this is the, you know, kind of a second transportation card. In addition, we have been collaborating with Benjamin Bus for the last two years and giving them access to our Skylert system, and they are actually able to go in and target, you know, very specific parts of a bus route to be able to share with families if their, the alternate stop is put into effect. Families would receive a voice, a phone call, the automated phone call, and they'd also receive a text message and an email. So, there'd be tremendous amount of communication to make sure people knew that the alternate bus stop would go into effect. So, again, this is just another piece that we're trying to say, what can we learn from last winter? We obviously had a successful pilot with the formerly called Flexible Learning Days, now called E-Learning Days, but we also had this situation where there were just a couple of bus routes out of the 25, you know, that we would have had to have made a decision, do we cancel school or not? This was a relatively creative solution. It's different than plowed roads only, right? The old days, you would see plowed roads only, come across the WCCO ticker. This is a little bit more nuanced than that because we can have that ability to target it in this way. So, those are, that's really what we're looking at. We just simply wanted to share this information with the board, so make sure that you are aware and get any feedback that you might have. You know, I look at this as falling under our management of emergency winter weather, so I hadn't planned to bring it back to you for a vote unless that's something that you'd like me to do. Really, we look at it as an administrative tool to make sure that we can have school remain open. And we had some very positive feedback from families about the alternate stops last year because, again, the alternate of us not being able to send a bus, you know, anywhere near there, you know, would have been even more problematic. So, those are the things that we're thinking of right now. We're continuing to look at different ways. We had a brief discussion today. You may have seen last year, there was a couple of times or a handful of school districts where instead of having a two-hour late, they ran a three-hour late start. And we've talked with Benjamin Bus about, do they have the infrastructure to be able to handle that? Just again, some continued brainstorming about how can we best make sure that we get kids to school? We know that the E-Learning Days are a good plan when we just absolutely cannot get people here, but we like kids and we want them here. And so, we're trying to find what are the ways that we can make sure that we can mitigate those weather-related issues and get kids here in a variety of different ways. So, I will be happy to answer any questions that people have at this time, but just wanted to share this concept that we had with you. I know I've talked with you about this before. Last spring, I gave you an update as to some of the things that we had been doing.
Questions, come, come.
So, if they get picked up on the alternate route, do they get dropped off on that? And, or if they get picked up on the normal route and weather changes over the course of the day, would the alternate route be implemented and would the parents be there and everything to get them home?
So, I think there's a, the answer would be it depends because the alternate route is really in response to what's happening at the time. How I, here's how I see it. I see during the wintertime, like in terms of if we were using it as a response to snow, but I most often would see this, I, we would use it on a very, very limited basis. It would be if we thought it was just a couple of routes. I would see it potentially paired with a two-hour late start. So, a two-hour late start gets most of the district plowed, but maybe there's, on this handful of bus routes, there, a couple of them just aren't ready yet. We would use that, I would see, for the morning, and most of the time, by the afternoon, we'd be able to go back to the regular routes. If we were to have another spring like we did, you know, the winter and the spring where we had a tremendous amount of moisture and the gravel roads were, some of them were just very difficult, that's where I would see us doing what we did in the spring where we just said, we're actually implementing these alternate routes until further notice. And so, it depends on the route. Most of the routes have the same pickup and drop-off location, but our ridership in the morning and the afternoon can be slightly different. So, there were some where there was one location in the morning and a different one in the afternoon. Again, Benjamin Bus works with the families, they, you know, they look at what's the safest place for them to complete that pickup or drop-off. And so, the short answer is that it depends. The longer answer is winter, probably only for the morning, two-hour late start, but we'd be able to use it a number of different ways. And then, in that spring freeze-thaw, you know, more of a, hey, until further notice kind of thing.
Good question, Tom. Other questions?
I had a couple of questions. So, actually, when you kind of Google out there and see, there's quite a few districts that actually have this in place, and I think it's a really creative solution. And I think, you know, you say we, of course, we want kids in school, but we also know that it's a burden for families sometimes too. So, I think that this really helps families who, who have to find alternative care sometimes at the last minute. We, do you have a sense how close the alternate bus stops are to existing? I imagine it varies, and I imagine they try to get it as close as they can. Is there a sense of how they have determined that in terms of proximity to a rider's existing or primary?
So, I can't give you a mile radius, but I can give you an example. So, one of the examples from last spring was a portion of a bus route. So, it wasn't even an entire bus route. So, it would have been, in that case, it was the, it was the intersecting paved road. So, basically, get your kid to the end of the road and we'll be able to take him. So, that's one example. There are some that depended, there was another route that I would say it was further. There were only two homes on that route that the bus served, but it was a longer trek for them because they were much further down the road that was a problem. So, I know what they're looking at is, you know, it's, you know, when you get into the rural area, it's, you know, a checkerboard really, and so what's the closest paved road that we think is a safe pickup and drop-off point? In some cases, it, you know, might be a few hundred yards, and in some other cases, it might be a couple of miles.
Okay. Yes, I think that those, those who are primarily in the cities and don't venture into some of our rural areas, they're, you know, the bus stops are, can be very challenging and quite spread out.
And I think that our rural families are very sophisticated, and, you know, they understand, you know, that they are, you know, more affected in some ways by dramatic winter weather just because of the nature of how much further they have to go. I'm very impressed with the resilience that rural families demonstrate and their willingness, you know, to, to work with and make sure, you know, because from time to time, there might be a road where even on a regular snowy day, the bus company has contacted the family to say, boy, we're not sure we can get up that one today, and they're making that negotiation right there on the spot. And so, I really applaud the resilience of our rural families. This is another way that we're trying to work with them. Again, to be able to try to have school to the best of our ability while trying to make sure that we're honoring their needs as well.
And then my, my last comment, you and I touched base on this briefly. I had asked about when we're doing announcements on chem radio, et cetera, do we make those announcements as well? And I understand that you had already said some of the routes, it isn't affecting entire routes, and it could be confusing to say, you know, schools open, limited transportation to some areas would probably incite a lot of confusion for the broader school community and that, so we're better focusing that message just within those families that it affects versus when we're making weather announcements through media outlets, just keep it as the majority of the students affected.
That's exactly right. I think we want to make sure we have the ability to, you know, be very targeted with our communication. I think that that's the approach that we're using, though we, even from last year, we learned that we had only used email for anything that was not a cancellation. That was just the internal district protocol because we don't want to be having people's phones ring off the hook because what happens then, they see the number, now they don't bother to answer it because, oh, I know what that is. So, the key thing is that we are trying to make sure that we're being diligent, but we did learn last year through the alternate stop process that we are going to commit to giving people a phone call, a text message, and an email. And we're going to do a renewed push on getting people to sign up for the Skylert text message because it's not like something else. In fact, the law basically prohibits us just from sending text messages to people without their permission to begin with because you all know what happens to your email with spam, right? And the phone companies and the federal government does not want people just bursting text messages without people's permission. So, they actually have to take a step to opt in to the text messages. That is actually, of course, the most efficient way to communicate with people because you can give just enough information and then say, check your email for additional details. But we have something like only 400 people signed up for our text messages out of the thousands of people who we have. So, we're going to be doing a renewed push to get people to sign up for the text messaging.
Well, the other great thing about the text messaging too is caregivers, grandparents, anyone who's involved in the care of that student can get that same, you know, that same text message.
Yeah, that's a great point because parents can actually customize their Skylert settings to up, I think it's up to nine other numbers. And so, they can have nine phone numbers, they can have nine SMS text message numbers, they can have nine emails. So, if you want to have grandma, grandpa, you know, Uncle Bob, you know, everybody down the line, you can, they can all get to know. We usually get calls from those people because they're pretty upset that we're calling them at 5:00 AM to cancel school when their kids don't go here, but they can arm wrestle that with their family as opposed to us.
Yeah.
Can you clarify who qualifies for busing and who doesn't? And some of these days when it's, you know, 30 below or bad storms, you know, what we really can provide or do on a safety basis to get kids safe to and from school?
Yeah, so I'm going to have Val help me out in terms of just the walk radius. And so, for elementary schools, it's a .75 mile walk. So, if you live within .75 miles of the elementary school, you walk outside of .75 miles, you get a bus. And then it's 1.25.
It's 1.0?
One, it's one mile for middle school, one high school students. And then I can't remember, do we have, we don't no longer have any hazardous crossings?
Um, I don't know that we've, did we, yeah, we formally changed.
Right, because that one, when we put the crosswalk in. So, it's if you live outside of .75 miles to an elementary school, you're eligible for transportation. Outside of a mile beyond, a mile beyond the middle school or high school, you're eligible for transportation. And then some school districts, so for example, when I lived in a previous district that US Highway 169 went right down the middle of the town, that was designated as a hazardous crossing. So, even though the homes on the south side of that highway were within the walking distance, the district had determined that that was a hazardous crossing, and we would provide busing at that point. Again, that's a previous district. In this district, we haven't, we have not done that in a couple of years since we implemented the crosswalk at 246 across from the middle school.
And do we do anything, you know, because obviously, we want to promote safe routes to and from school. So, is that ever done on, you know, on an individual basis, or where's the accountability in the know? You know what I mean? I mean, it's just kind of like, you got a lot of, you know, especially with the younger kids, you know, just to be spot on that we know where they are and where they're coming back and forth from school. I mean, obviously, it's a parent's responsibility too, but we want to be engaged with that.
Yeah, I would say that you nailed it there, Jeff, that really what we do is we look at that, the board has set what those boundaries are. And so, we do the calculation, and if you fall within that, you know, you are going to walk or ride your bike or get dropped off, or if you live outside of that, we'll provide transportation. The exception would be for students on an individual education plan. So, those students with a disability who their IEP team determines that they need specialized transportation, then the district provides that for them. So, you could live within a quarter of a mile, but if your individual education plan says you need door-to-door transportation, we'll provide that. So, that would be the one exception that we would make in that area.
Other questions or comments?
So, I'm just interested in then the distance between the rural homes and the new bus stop. I mean, if it's, if you can't be a mile from, if you're more than a mile from school, then you get picked up by a bus if you're, or .75 if you're in elementary school. So, is, are the distances going to increase so that then you're getting dangerous walking distances or people without snowmobiles having further to go?
So, I think the question is what we, as we were working on this potential solution, it's a matter of, these folks are all eligible for transportation, but we always try to safely transport. So, the, the balance is, you know, again, we've been using this in a very limited set of circumstances. So the balance is, you know, again, we'd be using this in a very limited set of circumstances. The balance would be that we're canceling the entire school district for the matter of a couple of rural routes where we could safely pick up students at the closest intersection. And so I think, you know, those two alternatives, or for example, when we had to unfortunately tell, you know, those few families last year that we weren't able to get a bus down that road, I think that that's the trade-off there. They're certainly eligible for transportation, of course, but we're not planning to use that walk radius as a guideline for the alternate stops. And the reason would be is that we are trying to get as close as we possibly can, you know, to folks home while we'll be able to still safely pick up. And, you know, even in town where we do have some bus stops, it's, you know, in-town bus stops, it's not uncommon for a shared bus stop where students are walking a block or so, you know, to be able to get to that bus stop. So in this alternate route or this alternate stop scenario, we're not, we haven't been thinking about it in that way. Maybe we should, but it's based upon our experience of working with those families who can say, we'll get them, you know, to that location. If you can get the bus there, we'll get them there. And so this is a little bit different than the walk radius because we're trying to provide safe transportation, yet make sure that we can keep school going. And we may, we may never, this might be like that security blanket that I have in the back of my Subaru that I have it in there all winter and never need it. That's what we really hope for, but we learned enough last year that we think we should put it in our bag of tricks to handle what we hope aren't a trend of very difficult Minnesota winters.
Excellent questions.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I think that hearing the board's comments, the board members' comments and any lack of concern, I think we can move forward without boarding. We just thank Benjamin Busch because they are incredible partners for us, and I know that they will work with every individual family to understand what will work and certainly be available when those families receive those postcards in October if they have questions and comments. They will be right there, just alongside, making sure that that's the right solution for that particular family. So we really appreciate all their work.
It's a good partnership that we have with Benjamin Busch.
We're very lucky to have them.
So Dr. Hillman mentioned he is going to remain at the podium. Our next item for discussion is the Studer Education Partnership Updates, and that information is in your packet as well.
So as you may recall, the school district was able to enter into a partnership with Studer Education in 2018, largely due to a very generous grant from the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative. And as we've talked about, Studer Education is a group that focuses on helping school districts, I, in my education, e say systemized continuous improvement. So the way I look at it is that Studer really is helping us getting better at getting better. And so that we're not just allowing, improving our services as a happy accident, but it's a very thoughtful, reflective process that is rooted in data and focused on service. And so I wanted to share a little bit with you about our partnership with them this evening. And the first piece that I want to share with is Quinn Studer's Nine Principles. And it's always worth to tell the story of Quinn Studer. Quinn Studer started off as a special education teacher in Wisconsin and spent some time as a special education teacher. And after a while, he chose to leave the field, and he went to work in healthcare as an administrator in the healthcare industry. And he was charged with helping improve services to patients and to their families. And he quickly identified that one of the best ways to create a continuous improvement model in healthcare was a process he was very familiar with, the Individualized Education Plan. And so he took the concept of the IEP, measuring what are our current levels of performance, setting a goal for a short distance into the future, making sure that there were specific strategies and actions that were planned to be taken, and then on a regular basis, measuring, were we making a difference? And then going back and starting that all over again. It's commonly called the Plan Do Study Act Model. And so as Quinn Studer really built this in healthcare across the country, becoming one of the most sought-after approaches to improving healthcare, he brought it back to education in a way very similar to how he had used this continuous improvement process in healthcare. And through years of research, Quinn had identified these nine principles as common in excellent organizations. We like to think of ourselves as an excellent organization, but you have to keep working at it, right? And so when we think about the nine principles, we want to make sure that we're committing to excellence, that we are looking to be excellent for everyone every day. We want to measure the important things. You hear often through the school improvement plans and other things about how we're trying to look at, what is the measure that can tell us, are we really doing good work? Building a culture around service, we are a people business. And so whether it be working with students, which is obviously what we're here to do, or their parents, or the public, how are we creating a culture that exemplifies not just good, but excellent service? One of the things I've really become appreciative of Studer Education is they focus on developing leaders to develop people, and it's something that Quinn is really passionate about, saying that especially in lean times, people will, leadership can become a little bit of martyrdom and say, oh, we don't need to improve ourselves, we don't need to develop our skills, when actually a tremendous amount of research says that investing in your leaders is one of the greatest cascading investments that you can make. Because if you are investing in your leaders for them to develop the people who are, they are working with, that organization grows exponentially faster than if you don't do it that way. We've all read the stories and about the statistics about the engaged employee versus the disengaged employee right across America. And so really making sure that schools are no different, focusing on employee engagement, making sure that people feel valued, that they have some autonomy in the work that they do, and what they say is valued and that they have an authentic voice in their workplace. Building of individual accountability. We all are individuals who make decisions every day in this school system. Do we have a sense of accountability for the work that we do and the decisions that we make? And it's not fake accountability, right? Is that deep-seated personal belief that I make a difference every day? And can I look myself in the mirror at the end of the day and saying, yes, I did my best work for kids today? And that culture of individual accountability is important. Making sure that we align behaviors with values and goals. There are a lot of strategic plans that hang on the wall, that the way they say it is, do your values hang on the wall or do they walk the halls? That's the little thing that our coach KK Owen says. And we have all seen organizations that have a wonderful mission statement but do nothing to actually align with it. You have seen many proposals that we have brought to align. We have a specific item from the strategic plan that we say, this is aligned to this particular part of the strategic plan. Now I want to be clear, we have galaxies to go before I can say that our behaviors are completely aligned with our values and goals, but we're moving in the right direction. Julie mentioned before about communication and how difficult it has become, almost because we have too many communication channels, right? But another principle of an excellent organization that we communicate at all levels. So it isn't that we just blast something out and expect everyone to know it, but we're being very thoughtful about how we communicate, what we communicate, the term that we use in our own little lingo now is the right word, the key, right word, the key words at the key times, what we're, who needs to know what, at what point to allow them to help us carry the mission forward. And finally, recognize and reward success. And this is very difficult for Midwesterners, right? It's very difficult for someone to accept a compliment about the work that they do. I've been giving shout-outs for the, what we call a shout-out for the last 18 months, and I can tell you it is becoming an organizationally changing thing. It was a simple practice that I changed in my meeting with administrators each time, asking, is there somebody who has been particularly helpful to your part of the school district, you know, going after our mission lately? Now we're starting to see other people do that for others without even being part of it. And so recognizing and rewarding success, and remember, recognizing and rewarding success isn't some kind of big award. It is about saying, hey, you made, I gave a shout-out to someone today because they reprioritized their work to help another department who had something that they couldn't anticipate come up. And the regular process, which is bulletproof, it's just excellent, probably wouldn't have gotten it done for about a week. And that's not a problem, that's the typical process. But, you know, recognizing for those people that they had the good sense to say, oh, yes, this is more important than the other stuff that I've got going, I need to make sure we take care of this. That sounds so simple, but what we know is that when we reinforce people for doing good work, it has this, what we call a flywheel effect, and that flywheel starts to turn, and then all people that are doing the things that they should do and being willing to go above and beyond for others as well. These nine principles are essential, and our team got a chance to learn it. We all did a book study last summer on Quinn Studer's book, Maximizing Performance, and we use it through the whole year. I've got some of my administrative team here who can back me up that nearly every leadership team, I mean, we had something from this book that we discussed or talked about. And so it wasn't just a read it and set it back on the shelf. It is something that we continue, and you can see, as you all know, I'm not the biggest paper person in the world, but look at all my sticky notes to go to different parts in the book. So I think that it is safe to say that we have buy-in on the nine principles and this So I think one of the things that Studer provides is help with organizational diagnostics, and this goes to that measuring what matters component that we talked about. And so when we look at how we handle this, one of the things, we just actually implemented our second district services survey, and this is a survey of all 13 district-level departments, including transportation, even though we outsourced that, we still ask the question. And this asks building-level leaders and support staff to rate the services from each department that they get through the district. There are five areas in which they are assessed: accessibility, accuracy, attitude, operations, and timeliness. Those are the five areas that are rated on a five-point Likert scale. So that's the district services survey. The employee engagement survey, which will be giving our second employee engagement survey, starting in late November, has 18 different questions, ranging from how people feel about the building or the program that they work. You know, examples are like, my principal or supervisor cares about me as a person. That's one of the questions, because we know that obviously people will give more if they feel that their boss is personally invested in them, right? That's just one example of the kind of question. Or I have an influence in decisions made in my workplace. Those are a couple of examples of the kinds of questions. And the employee, it also talks a little bit about district-level leadership and then has some questions about communication through the system. And again, we provided that survey to our employees last year, and we'll start to do it again here this year. We had our parents' satisfaction survey last spring, and the parents' satisfaction survey has 17 questions specific to each building. And you've already seen a little bit of that with some goals in our school improvement plans that derive directly from our parents' satisfaction surveys. Now, all, the student engagement survey, it's a service that Studer Education offers. We have not chosen to use that because we've been doing our own student engagement surveys for several years, and we have had some anecdotal data that shows people actually do make changes in their classrooms, you know, based upon that student engagement survey process that we've had. So we plan to keep that the way that it is now. But for those first three survey tools, there's a really, the really important part is the rollout or sharing the data. So I'm going to describe, in fact, right here is a picture of Principal Sam Richardson rolling out the employee engagement survey data in the winter last year. Now Sam had to reschedule his employee engagement rollout because of weather several times, but it always comes back to snow, doesn't it? So what happens is the building leader or the departmental leader in terms of the DSS provide for the people in their department, so if it's the HR department, it's all the HR employees together with Molly Dieselman rolling out the data. If it's at Greenville Park, it's Sam Richardson rolling out the data. And what Sam will explain is he'll explain how many people participated in the survey from Greenville Park, he'll give them their overall rating across all areas, and then he will highlight, here are the two wins that we had, here are the two highest scored questions in the survey. And he will ask people, why do you think our customers, our stakeholders scored us so highly on this? And the people in the room don't just pass it, they actually work in small groups and they participate in saying, hey, I think that people think we do this well because we're really insistent on this, 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 and this. And then all of that goes up in front of everyone. Then we go back and we ask the same question about the two areas that are the lowest rated. So these are the two lowest rated areas. What are the, what if, the question that we ask then is, if we were to have a change where the, everyone would rate this question a five, the highest score we could get, what would we be doing in order to receive a five? Now, you have seen that firsthand with the parents' satisfaction survey results. In fact, Principal Nancy Antoine stood before you and said, the area that we want to make sure that we're focusing on is positive reinforcement to students. And so they had the idea, their building came up with a solution of a postcard, two postcards for each child, so it's a very easy way to look at that we've actually made sure that people have gotten this. So that's an example of an action plan, that every student, 100% of Bridgewater Elementary students will receive two positive postcards about their work at school by May 30th, you know, 2020. So those, that's an example of the action plan goals that can come out of the survey. And then what happens is really important, is a process for updating people on that. So for example, Principal Greg Jellinow at Northfield Middle School, at his staff meeting each month, provides an update to people about the employee engagement action plan, gives a data report on what have we done, and if there's something that's preventing them from achieving that action plan, they share that transparently. So what the beauty of it is, is it's not just a survey tool, right? It's a survey tool plus a transparent and owning of the data, and then going from there to having an action plan and following up, and then testing it again, right? So we're going to have our first DSS update when we see, what did departments do over the past year? Did their scores in those areas improve? We will find that out. The DSS was the first one, as we say, district always goes first. And so we learned a few things that helped inform how the buildings did their employee engagement and their parents' satisfaction surveys. So the leadership development is really important. So this is a photo from a conference this summer that we were at in Milwaukee for a day or two, and in the middle there is KK Owen. She is the coach that we have from Studer Education. Ted Kircher was our original coach from Studer Education, and we started with KK again last year, and she's phenomenal. She's a former high school principal, has done a lot of different administrative jobs. And if you talk to our people, she has a lot of credibility with our team. She's got a lot of experience, she talks the talk, she walks the walk, and she is pretty fantastic. So what is leadership development? We've had five different leadership development institutes, whether a portion of a day, it could be ranging from an hour of time during an administrative meeting all the way to a full day of leadership development activities. So some of the things that we've worked on are how to do those rollouts that I just mentioned and how to own the data, right? Really important about, as the building principal, this data is mine, and I'm responsible for it. And so it's not trying to pawn it off on the bigger we, right? It's about, I'm the leader, and I own the data, and how can we make this place better for you? Something that we focused on substantially and actually presented at their conference is the concept of we-they. And in every workplace, we-they is probably the most destructive component against quality organizational culture. And so, and how that works out is that, you know, boy, if, you know, if the folks in the central office would have just given us a little bit more money, we could have done this. And so it's pitting, you know, one area of an organization against another. I see people smiling because this infects every organization. Every workplace has that, whether it be a construction site, a hospital, a daycare center, a school, a fast food restaurant, you know, it's all out. Well, if the people in the back would get, you know, their act together and make the burger right, I wouldn't have this problem up front, right? Or in the newspaper industry, it could be my editor, it could be, you know, it could be that the advertising people didn't get. So it's always looking at how are we, how are we creating divisions rather than looking at that collective we together? We've done a lot of work on this to make sure that as a leadership team, as we're talking with people and as we're making sure how decisions are communicated, that it's a piece that we're one school district. And this is, this is a lot that we're, I'm going to explain to you the why, I want to make sure that we're really clear about why we're in the predicament we're in or why we've made a decision. And while people may not always agree, at least they have the understanding of the why, and it's just a very unifying factor. And until you really think about it, you think, eh, it's not a big deal. If you really think about how that kind of deficit thinking and how that blame game, if you will, affects any kind of organization, it is debilitating, and no good organization can actually function with that. So we've been very pleased that we did some very intentional work on we-they, and we were asked to present at their national conference about some of the work that we had done. We've also talked about conversation protocols. So contrary to popular opinion, no one wants to become a principal so that they can give people negative reviews, right? That's not why people go into educational leadership. But there are times where principals or other district-level leaders have to have difficult or frank conversations with people frankly because we need to do better for kids, right? And so if the people who are charged with leadership aren't willing to have some difficult conversations, that can be problematic. And so you'd think that, oh, that should be part of the training. It isn't always part of your administrative training, and it's something I can tell you, having taught these conversations for more than a decade to graduate students, it's the kind of thing you need to keep coming back to. So we've had some training about conversation protocols, about how to make sure that you can have a conversation that might help correct a situation while at the same time moving the relationship for it and then actually getting results. while at the same time moving the relationship for it, and then actually getting results for kids, because that's what we're here for. We've also talked about how every time that we have anybody in the school district sitting in a meeting, we're spending money. And so making sure that the way that we conduct meetings is efficient, that it's useful for people, that they're either growing in some way, shape, or form in their leadership skills, or the decision-making process in a meeting is clean and efficient, people have the information that they need ahead of time, et cetera. And we're actually starting to rate the meetings at the end of each meeting to say, was this a valuable issue of your time? Was not? What could we have done to make it better? Because the taxpayers are paying. Every time we've got people sitting in a room talking about something, that's work that people are paying for. Are we making sure that it is something that is efficient? We don't want to have death by meeting, right? And a lot of places where they end up with that. We all know that this is all about people. So employee retention is such an important piece. And so we talk about the fact that we are always re-recruiting our highest performers. And so we have implemented a process called rounding, which has been incredibly successful, though it does seem daunting when you really think about how many people in the district. But the goal is to make sure that a leader gets to have a one-on-one or a one-on-small-group conversation with every person who works in the district. It's very simple. So if I'm rounding with Tom, I'm going to say, Tom, what's going well for you today? What's going well recently? And then the leader shuts their mouth. And yes, I actually do shut my mouth during this. You can ask my team when I ask them these questions. And we just listen, what's going well? Because as the leader, I really want to know what's going well, because I might be able to take that and apply that in another circumstance. We'll ask things like, what are the, what are the barriers that are in your way from doing your best work? And so those conversations, you think, it's, a lot of times you think it'd be money, or it'd be, you know, something, you know. It's, a lot of times it's not. Sometimes it's a scheduling piece, sometimes just, hey, I really need this help with this student. So hearing, what are the barriers that are in your way from doing your best work is a really powerful question. And then finally, we ask that shout-out question. Is there anybody who's specifically been helpful to you lately in getting your job done? This is gold. Because when you get, as a leader, get to tell someone else that one of their colleagues praised their work, and very specifically, it's not just that, hey, you do a great job. It's, I really, you know, this person really appreciated when you did this, this, and this, because it made the chance for them to do their job that much easier. That is very powerful. If you don't believe me, just try it a couple of times. It is incredibly powerful, and we are working to expand that this year. So as we've kind of talked through the presentation here, we're working on that survey growth, really taking that very seriously. We're developing that formal rounding plan, expanding it beyond just the pilot that we really did last year. We're going to continue the leadership development institutes. In fact, you know, one of my superintendent goals is to develop a scorecard. On November 4th, we have KK Owen in town, and she is helping us, our entire team, starting to look at that scorecard process. And then we have already started to have an influence. Of course, the goal with this is to have an influence on the classroom, obviously. Everything that we've been talking about is about having an influence to the student level. This year, we changed our PLC reporting process from twice per year, where a PLC would set their goal, they would go with their work until January, then they would look at their work and say, how are we doing? And then they would set it until the end of the year. And so what we're doing is we're reducing what PLCs have to report, but we're asking them to report it each quarter. Again, if I've set a goal, and I am nine weeks in, and I realize that I'm not going to make the goal, for whatever reason, do I either need to take a look at the goal? Do I need to take a look at the strategies that I'm using? So that we're being intentional about saying, I'm going to just make those goals shorter, so that I'm able to actually influence it through the whole year, as opposed to waiting to get my report card, if you will, only twice a year. And again, this is what best practice is in a 45-day review, right? If you really think about it, a quarterly PLC review is a 45-day review, which is very common in a lot of different organizations to look at. How are they, how are they progressing toward their annual goals? So we're very excited about that. And of course, like any change, we're working through, you know, just a variety of things with that. So at the end of the day, this is the phrase that we are often asking each other in our system, among our leaders at this point, is what does right look like? So that's, we're trying to model what right looks like, you know, through our professional communication, decision-making, being one district family, if you will. And how are we making sure that when we know what right looks like, that we are making sure we're holding ourselves accountable for it, number one? And then making sure that it's not a happy accident that we keep trying to get better at. So this is a phrase that we are often using right now, which is, what does right look like? So when we're having some kind of issue within the system, we're saying, okay, what does right look like here? And have we really helped people understand that? Because more often than not, people didn't understand what right looked like. And so we're not taking that for granted anymore. That, as we've talked with you before, about how year two of implementations of things here, some, we think, oh, we did that in year one, everything's great, right? But making sure we continually remind ourselves, what does right look like? And how can we make sure that that is, that happens as a matter of process, and not a matter of accident, if that makes sense? Some of you know my disdain for paying consultants, because I think we have a lot of depth within our school district. This is easily the best money that we have, this is the best money of someone else that we've ever spent, because it's about a two-thirds, one-third arrangement right now. But what I can tell you is that when you look at the surveys after each of the leadership development institutes, incredibly high results, you know, from our leadership team. And I really do believe in what Quinn Studer talks about in terms of really investing in your frontline leaders. Because that is where a lot of the day-to-day kinds of things happen. And if they feel empowered and have the autonomy to make sure that they're getting that flywheel that we've talked about going, and we know that there's going to be greater employee engagement, which is going to lead to better results. Because again, if I'm a teacher and I'm engaged, the kids know it, right? The kids know, oh, yeah, they're all in, this is going to be great, right? So that is what we continue to work toward. And it's very exciting. In my 25 years in public education, this is easily the best thing that we have ever done for a system in and of itself. There's been a lot of other things we've done great for programs, but from creating a system that is reliable, that is good for kids, is good for the people who serve kids and responsible to the taxpaying community, it's not even close. And so I am incredibly proud. There was, there was a joke about, you know, am I a zealot for this? That was a joke that we had one time. And I am a zealot for this, because when you see it working, it will springboard us from being a great district to something that is truly excellent. And I'm incredibly proud of the work that we've done with the last year. As you can see, I'm easily able to talk about it for some time. So we are getting better at getting better. I'd be happy to answer any questions or respond to any comments you have at this time.
Excellent, thank you. Questions or comments? Rob?
Thank you for the report. And I'm wondering if you could give some example of how developing leadership in some of the non-classroom areas, like developing the leadership, I mean, the example I can think of maybe is developing leadership in child nutrition, how that will impact the education of the students? Or developing leadership in the custodial staff, or, you know, the non-classroom?
Absolutely. So a number of different things that I can share. So let's take that child nutrition example to begin with. So, you know, one of the things that we know is that we want to make sure that the goal that they had for their DSS last year was to increase or decrease the student wait time, right, to be served for lunch. And so what that is looking at is what's good for kids there is not, it's not that they're eating faster, right? It's that they're getting served faster, so they have more time to eat and socialize, because we know that that little bit of downtime for all students is positive at that time of the day. So there's an example of how, when they looked at their data, the child nutrition department looked and said, okay, well, we wanted to, we wanted to decrease the amount of time that any student is waiting in line to get their lunch. Now, that's, it sounds like a great goal, that's a difficult one to measure on a day-to-day basis. So that is the kind of thing that child nutrition has been working on over the past year. That's just one example. What I will also say to you is that, if you think about a district-level department in the area of operations, right? So if I have an efficient operation, let's just take the human resources department and their process that they have for posting jobs. So once we determine that there's an opening, we want to have a full, fair, quick, reasonably quick process where we can get excellent candidates, right? Because we're competing against lots of other school systems. So if you were looking in the operations area here, and that's not what the HR goal was last year, but if you were, because actually they have a very good system for posting jobs in that process. But how that would be impacted in the classroom is if we have a strategic advantage in terms of how we post positions, how we process those kinds of things, and how we bring people into the school system, that creates an engaged employee right away, which we know is good for kids. So that's just another example of how we would look at it. Give you another example, if I can pick on Erin, directly from Community Services. Community Services has people across the whole district. And in fact, there's a lot of times they're working asynchronously. So when they did their review of their data last year, they realized something that they needed to do was to do some more intentional training of their staff on using Google Docs, right? Because people were still in that Microsoft Office-centric area. But the ease of sharing and the other things, there was just a realization, we have not really trained people in Community Services well enough on how to use Google Docs. So there was some very intentional training that happened. And we look forward to seeing the new DSS results to see, did that impact? I think that was, was that, did that impact, it wasn't timeliness?
And organization.
Organization, yeah, and the operational part, yeah. So those are just some examples. When you do the visit to Menominee Falls, Wisconsin, what you'll see is that, and our director of building grounds, Jim Colseth, is really fired up about this, because when you, after several years, when you go to Menominee Falls, which I believe you may have gone, the buildings and grounds department is incredibly proud of the efficiencies that they've made within that system, because what they know is that if they can spend less on facilities operation, that means that that's more money that can be spent in the classroom. So really rallying people around, I could continue on, but I'll leave those there if those are sufficient examples, Rob.
Yes.
And then, talking about developing leaders, to develop people, I'm wondering, as you're talking about the cascading effects, does this include developing students as leaders? We have some student leaders here. I mean, are students calling out their fellow students for things that they've helped them with, and things like that? I mean, is it going all the way down?
I would not say that we have been that intentional yet, we're only one year in. So I can't say that that is happening as a regular base, on a regular basis, based upon our leadership training. But I would hope that that would get to that point. Because really, you know, you think about, that's creating a culture of gratitude. And if you look at any of the studies around happiness, right? One of the key elements of the people who study and research happiness is being grateful. And so while I would say that that is something that I think we tried to emphasize, I can't say to you yet that we have been intentional about sharing that further. Certainly an area where we will be going, but just not as of yet, intentionally, anyway.
Thanks.
Excellent questions, Rob. Noel?
You had some items under, some, under your leadership development, some components that I think are really, really important. And in my years of industry, I hadn't heard them. And I wished I had, like, how can I help you do your job better? And that's really helpful, and so thank you.
It's our, it is a, it's just a labor of love. We love what this is doing for us in terms of really just helping really sharpen our focus on what's important. Because as you all know, in public education, there are lots of things that people want us to do and think we should do. And we can really get derailed by trying to be all things to all people. What I really appreciate about what we're doing is it's really helping us narrow our focus to a certain extent, but also creating templates that allow us to be successful in many different areas. So thanks, Noel.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
So those green post-it notes are called tabs?
Yes. Fair point.
As you were reading and talking about this, I kept thinking that something like this could go on in a classroom. That the we-they, taking ownership, doing, or what's right and what does work. Do they have a casual version of this? Or is there a way to put it in there?
So that is where we're headed. The next layer is the short-cycle goals that we mentioned for our PLCs. When, I remember distinctly Val and I visiting a kindergarten classroom in Menominee Falls, where the kindergartner could tell us, here's what I'm working on, here's what my goal is, and in a little bit, I'm going to be getting better at this. And another strategy, we talked about rating the meetings. There's a strategy that we use called plus delta, which means what went well? What would we change the next time? And as we can, it's, we're seeing districts that are six and seven years into this. And when you start to get down to where it's a very comfortable part about the adults, it obviously transfers to the students unintentionally. But there are, the next layers are some very intentional student pieces. So we actually witnessed a teacher at the end of a unit with students saying, we're going to do a plus delta chart on this unit. So what are the things, as a teacher, that I did during this unit that helped you learn, helped you learn the material or the concept? Students talk it out, talk about it. What were things that you would have me do differently the next time? And this teacher had done this a few times before, so that she had to say upfront, I also, I already know that you would all like more Kahoot games, but that's not going to be part of that, so can't, we can't admit. But the point is, is that it does filter. But there's some very intention, there's intentionality about getting the adults to be able to make this flywheel move as we keep moving towards. Because the adults do need to be comfortable with it as we continue forward with it. But when you see the places that have done this well, you know, for five, six, or seven years, it is truly amazing to see regard. I have to tell you the story of before we signed to go on with Studer. When we were at a site, I went to the high school cafeteria and I looked for the most, you know, I looked for someone who I thought was the football coach. And I walked up to the person, I said, so, do you guys just put this dog and pony show on, on the days where people come? Because they have hundreds of people who want to come see this in action. They limited it two times a year. And he looked at me in the eye and says, you know, you wouldn't think it, but it's the way this place rolls, and it works. And so I think that, you know, as, as the system really rolls, and as you become very intentional about the system's thinking, and not just the concept, but really putting pieces in place to make sure that there, it's not, it's not an accident, that it's happening with intentionality, it's going to be fantastic. We've already seen a lot just with our leadership team, and as we keep going forward, it's going to be even better as time goes on. So we will have some progression and regression during the process, but it's very exciting.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
So one of the things that probably principals and teachers have to do is deal with parents who have complaints about things. And the parents are not probably going to be trained in plus delta and all these things. So how does this impact, you know, if a, if a parent calls up and is really angry about something that happened to their child in school, does it change the way you do things?
So how I would articulate that would be that, I would say that some of the same conversation protocols that we have talked about, you know, for difficult conversations with supervisor to employee can be employed in the same way. So one thing that our administrators get tired of hearing me say is, I actually think this might be a Noel Strat moment, which is, looking, I'm looking for the request in the complaint, right? So if I am upset with something that's happening, you know, to my child at school, and I'm complaining about it, inside of that complaint, there's a request. Our leaders are pretty darn good, you know, about being able to hear those requests in the complaint. And from time to time, you know, they aren't able to make an adjustment that can help. But for the most part, a lot of times people want to be heard. And if I can articulate to you, Rob, that I understand what your complaint is by saying, I want to make sure that I'm really clear about what the issue is here. I've intently, I've deeply listened, right? I think that that is an offshoot of this. There's a lot of these kinds of skills that are transferable, you know, in terms of conversations. And I, I think overall, we listen and look for the request in the complaint fairly well. Some conversations are easier than others, as you might imagine. But it's something that we really try to look at in that way.
Excellent questions and discussion. Any other comments? Noel?
Can I share with the board why you referenced me?
Yes.
Sometime ago, I had a phone call from a parent who said, the bus ride was too long. Hmm, okay. Well, where do you live? Well, I live on the west side of Circle A. How long did the bus ride used to be? Well, it was five minutes long, and now it's an hour. Well, you can't live 45 minutes away and have a 15-minute bus ride. So I said, tell me more, in which is what you're referring to. And when you retire, you can ask that question a lot. And I, you know, and I got more information, and I said, fine, you tell me more. And then finally, and now when my, when a student, when my son gets there, the first thing he takes is math. And I said, you know, I wasn't good at math. I'm not an early riser, having math at the first class. I'm not an early riser, having math at the first class of the day, this really could be a downer. Why don't you enroll your child, your, I'm sorry, your son in an afternoon math class? Well, she called me in February and said, that goes the difference. And simply, all I did, I didn't try to, you know, we, we try to be parents to solve the problems. And instead, I said, tell me more. And eventually, it came out what the issue was. Well, the issue wasn't the bus ride, the issue was the math class. And that was the impact of the grades. And second semester, the son went to doing, he was doing A and B work and everything else, and not math. And now he's, he was doing A and B work and math also. So my question usually is, tell me more.
That's right.
And it works.
Well, I want to thank the board for your support of this partnership that we have with Studer Education. And I also want to publicly thank the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative, you know, for their support of it. This is not the kind of thing that, you know, I would have pursued had we not had a way to have tested it. It is something that I feel very strongly would be good, is for, good for us to do as we move forward. It's the kind of thing that we would fund ourselves. But we're grateful to community organizations like HCI, who can help us try something to see, you know, does it work for us? And then if it does, it's something that we can certainly find a way to resource it ourselves. So I just want to thank the board for your support of the work, as well as HCI.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. And we would be remiss in not thanking you for your leadership.
My pleasure.
And your passion and enthusiasm for this program is obviously a great deal in why it's been launched so successfully and will continue to be successful.
Well, the leadership team that we have all make me look very good. It's a great arrangement. I do the talking, they do the work, and so it works out for me.
Well, I am giving you a shout out.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So we do have an item for discussion added. It was in the table file, if board members want to take a moment to look for that. It was the table file that included things, the consent agenda additions, et cetera. But it was, it's titled, Request to Hire Additional Non-L licensed Special Ed E.A.P.C.A. We do have Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall. Are you going to present or have Dr. Hillman present in your here for questions?
I'm happy to.
Okay, excellent. I just do want to put you on the spot if Dr. Hillman had all the information. So the, basically, there's a paragraph there that details this. And we're happy to have Cheryl here to give it to us in detail and answer any questions. Thank you, Cheryl.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And for this, listening to this request, we have, of course, every year, we evaluate where we are with our staffing in the spring for the next fall and trying to project what our needs will be. But we do encounter changes over the summer and into the fall. And we reevaluate that as we go, as, as needs arise. And that's what we have done over the last few weeks. At this time, after that evaluation of our, our needs, of our student needs and increases in students at Greenville Park, or having been identified recently as students with disabilities and, and needs for supports, we have found that we are requesting an increase in our PCA, Educational Assistant PCA time at Longfellow and Greenville Park to support our students and their IEP needs specifically. I have outlined there the amount that it will be for each position and the total salary and benefit amount of $70,640. We get about 55% reimbursement on the salary portion of those positions. And you'll see that amount there is $19,993 with an unreimbursed cost. And that's the cost to the district would be $50,707. We look at the needs in detail with schedules, student schedules, staff schedules, and the IEP needs, and determine how best to meet those needs. And when we have no other way to do that, we sometimes have to come before you and ask for those increases. And that's what we're doing today.
Okay. This is, will be an item for individual action at our next board meeting. But to help, to that end, other questions or comments? Yes, Rob?
For the, when you're determining the needs, is there a mandated kind of caseload that you're working with? Where with this amount of work, we actually need another person to take that amount of work? I mean, is it all kind of formulaic in a way?
In a way. Caseload refers to teacher time, caseload and workload for the teacher. And then we have the designated needs of an individual or group of students that would be identified through their individual education plan. So what we say is that students require accommodations and modifications to either their, their curriculum, or their environment, or the supports that they receive throughout the day. Those are described in their individual education plan. And then we ask the question, how is that going to be? Who, the what, the where, the why? How is that going to happen? And it's through the scheduling of the staff that have been. So it's the scheduling of their instruction first. And then it is also the scheduling of where students are throughout the day and where those accommodations can happen. And then how do those get implemented? So some students, those accommodations, if they are for personal cares, of course, that means that that's more child-specific. And we might need an adult or two to help do those, those personal cares. It might be for behavioral regulation. And so students might need to take a break or have some reminders throughout the day, or a plan that's, that's carried out to support them throughout the day so they can access their instruction when they're in the classroom. So it's, it's very detailed and complicated. And we look at all those layers. We have to kind of peel back the onion, so to speak, to be able to reveal what, what we can support and what we're not able to support. And yes, to answer that question about mandated, anything that's written into the IEP is mandated. And so we have to find a way to support it. And we, we look at that scheduling and try and build as much flexibility and accountability into that. But need to be able to still, in the end, need to be able to provide that level of service.
So the students, you get a different set of students every year. And you might have a lot of students in one year who need personal care assistance, and then maybe fewer the next year. So with the whole maintenance of effort thing, if you've got a different set of students with different needs, but you've hired somebody to do a specific thing for the students, you know, from the previous year, how does that work out?
That's, it is, it's like a puzzle. It's like putting a puzzle together and making sure that you have as clear a picture as you can of what that's going to look like. But sometimes, there's a missing piece, or there's pieces that are not there. And you have to gather that information and gather those pieces, or find those pieces and put that together. So again, it's a multi-layered system. Going from year to year, we do our projections. So we base, base what's going to happen in the next year based on our students that we currently have and who, who are in evaluation. And we kind of take that snapshot in the middle of the year. So we have, it's kind of the robust part of the school year that we're looking at, that we have a lot of services going on, and probably our highest child count and, and service amount. Some of it is also generated by the minutes of service that are actually in the IEP, in the Individual Education Plan. So we're taking all of those minutes that are generated by the staff and the explanations of that. And then you lay that on, kind of lay that on top of all the scheduling, all the pieces that have to go into play for multiple students at one building that need to be orchestrated, so to speak, to make that all happen, to allow them as much access to that general education curriculum as possible.
Sounds like you have a very complicated job.
Yes, at times.
Crazy complex, for sure. Other questions or comments? Tom?
So this $50,000 is for this year?
Yes.
And since you identified these new students, potentially next year, they will need the same or similar services?
Possibly. That's, that's correct. That could be correct.
Yeah, so this could actually be for more than this year, depending on how, like you were just talking about, how everything shapes out?
Right. And then we have other changes that might decrease someone else's needs and students moving on and moving out of the district, into the district. It, it goes up and down based on, on the needs of the students.
Any other questions or comments? I just have one question. To be certainly all aware of the shortage for special education teachers, what are you finding within the E.A.P.C.A. field that you're able to, to hire? Or has that become a challenge as well?
That varies. But right now, we've, we've seen an increase in our applicants and the pool is very strong. So we're actually, right now, in a good position. We never know if that's going to be sustainable or not, but that's, that's where we are.
Good. All right. Any other questions or comments? Again, we'll be voting on this at our next board meeting, which we have kind of a little bit of a break, it's not until October 14th, so. Excellent. Thank you. And Cheryl, thanks for all your work.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Just your little description of this one element makes us realize how incredibly challenging a job you have and how well you do it.
Well, I have a lot of good support. And again, a system that works very well to support us and our students.
And again, a shout out.
Thank you.
Okay.
See, we got the lingo going.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. So with that, we will move on to committee report. There was a committee report submitted by myself, actually, and we'll review it briefly. So I realize that our board liaison committees are just starting to get rolling for the school year. But it's exciting for me to present the committee report on a Communications Advisory Committee, which is a new committee. And thank you to Dr. Hillman for having the idea to form this committee. Albeit the purpose statement, because it really does give the crux of our work. The purpose of the Communications Advisory Committee is to prioritize the district's message, engaging stakeholder groups to inspire community action in support of our vision, advancing the district's local, statewide, and national image. And as we've mentioned a couple of times this evening, communication is, is a piece that all organizations struggle with in terms of how to, to communicate what's happening. What I think is unique about this committee is, again, like all of our committees, but it's a committee comprised of cross-section of district stakeholders, parents, community members, teachers, administrators, school board, liaison, myself, and students. And I also was remiss, Eric Maho, our new communications person, is part of that. And it's, attached to this is the, a sample of an agenda. And so quarterly, we'll meet. And what's really great is the district stakeholders will decide what some of the key messages that need to be, what topic is, is the most timely over the next quarter and the key messages, as well as who needs that information and how we'll disseminate that information. So I think it's a really strong group. We had our first meeting, there was a lot of input. It's stakeholders who are very committed to the district at all levels and had really good input on, on the messages we need to get out to, to our district stakeholders. So I think it's excellent. I thank Dr. Hillman for formulating that. And of course, we always have to thank all of those who are willing to serve on our district committees, including students, as, as Dr. Hillman mentioned, just very, very powerful contributions that they make. Really, everyone on the committees do such great work. And I know the Communications Advisory Committee will be no exception to that. So that's happening. So I will be reporting our work quarterly, but we are off to a great start there. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. So we will move on to the approval of the consent grouping. There were a few personnel items in the table file that were added. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Rob. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to items for individual action. Our first item.
I think we should do that.
Okay. So what we have for item for individual action is the proposed 2019 payable 2020 property tax levy. Here to present that information is Val Marstorf, Director of Finance. The information was in our packet. So because this is an item for individual action, I will, Val will do her presentation and then I will ask for a motion, at which point then we can answer questions, ask questions and answer, for Val to answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I am going to present our preliminary levy. If I can get this to work. There we go. So just a little bit about the levy. Our levy does provide about 25% of our total budget, of our general fund budget, and includes some pieces of community services and debt service as well. It does include both voter-approved levies and state-authorized levies. And it's really making up 25% of our budget allows us to continue to offer the great quality programming that we have. So this is kind of how the timeline works. So we are required to certify the preliminary levy by September 30th and then send that to the county. And then they basically take all that information of the preliminary levies and then produce the tax statements, which get mailed out typically in November. And then in December, we can come back and finalize the, finalize the levy. And then that is what they actually levy, beginning in January through December for the next calendar year. So they levy the January through December of 2020. Our budget year obviously doesn't run on a calendar year. And so the revenue that is generated is actually revenue for our 2020, '21 school year. So we get our first payments in May, typically, May and June for the, we get about 50% of that, because May is the first big collection. And we basically defer that revenue then into the next fiscal year and go through that process each year. The levy document does allow for the state to make adjustments for up to three years. So they're constantly going back. A lot of the formulas are enrollment-based, so they go back and see what, what did we estimate as enrollment? What did we actually have? And they're, they're constantly making sure that we got the exact dollars that we were supposed to, both positive and negative. So this is a breakout of just the different pieces. So you can see 36.7% of our total levy is our referendum, our voter-approved referendum. And then the other large buckets are just the general fund other and the debt service. The general fund other includes kind of all of the state-authorized levies for the most part, which I'll talk about a few of those in more detail. So this is a lot of numbers to look at. So I will give you the, the high level. Basically, overall, the levy is shown as a decrease of about $71,000. So we levy it about just over $20 million last year for our Pay 19. And our proposed is $19,954,486. So about a 0.36% decrease. When we're talking numbers, this slide is basically flat. You can also see the breakout by category, voter-approved and other, and as well as by the tax base, either refer to market value or net tax capacity. Those are the two different ways that our different levies are spread, basically who, who gets to pay for those and who doesn't. The general fund is showing an increase of about $91,000. Community services is up about $6,000. And debt service is down about $169,000. So those are some pretty summary numbers, and there's a lot of detail that goes into that. Some of the highlights are, overall, for the general fund, 85% of the formulas are enrollment-based formulas. We are showing some slight decline in enrollment, which is as we predicted. So overall, our general operating revenue is slightly less than what we had in Pay 19. But the reason that we're showing an But the reason that we're showing an increase is because we did add the achievement and integration levy. That is a 70% funded by the state, 30% levy. And because of the timing, because this is for our 2020-21 school year, we found out this spring that we were eligible for the achievement and integration. And so we started that this July. So we basically are levying for two fiscal years of the A&amp;I this time. So that's another reason that it's showing an increase. And in your packet, the number that I have in there, I think totaled $156,000 if I'm remembering correctly. Because it's the first time I did it, I actually entered the levy budget instead of the total budget. So there will be about an additional $40,000 that gets added to this. So overall, it will be about a .2% decrease. MD didn't have a levy run that picked up that number as of today. It'll probably be there tomorrow. So just know that that number will be changing slightly, but it's still going to be overall a slight decline. But that will get picked up. The request is to certify at the max, and so we have the ability to fluctuate those numbers because you're not certifying a specific dollar amount tonight. You're certifying at the max, which means once all the numbers are final, that max levy revenue is what we have the authority to go up to. The decline in the debt service is related to our debt service excess fund balance reduction calculation. So you might recall when I did my budget presentations, we are required by the state to levy 105% of our debt payments. And effectively what happens over time is that that 5% builds up and they do a calculation to say, what was your average fund balance over the last three years? And if it's over a certain criteria, they reduce that to help offset the burden for the taxpayers. So that's primarily what that is. That does include our new elementary project bond. So that is included in there. We did do the capitalized interest as a reminder, so it's a minimal amount in this year, but that is all included in there. So that is really what's driving that decrease. And then overall, our voter-approved is about 64.5% of the total. Last year, you might have noted it was about 69%. One of the biggest swings for that, it's not that we just lost voter-approved amounts, but the state actually made a change this past legislative session to change the local optional revenue. That was the $424 per pupil unit that they had moved a couple of years ago. And there was also in statute, $300 that could be board-approved. They've moved that piece over to the local optional. So basically, another 300 moved from our voter-approved to the local optional. Revenue in total is still the same, but it just looks a little different between voter-approved and other. So I just wanted to call your attention to that. This is the levy history, just five years of where our levy has been. Obviously, our pay 18 was our voter-approved increase for the operating referendum. 4% last year and then the .36, which will actually probably be about .2, once the run comes through tomorrow. So again, the most notable changes is really just declining enrollment and the impact that will have on our operating budgets. The change with the local optional revenue and the addition of the achievement and integration levy. And then, again, like I mentioned, we're approving at the max. So basically, we have the authority to go up to that, but if something were to change between now and December when we do the final, we would have the ability to under levy something if we chose to do that. I did include some tax impact analysis in your packet. We did see a pretty significant tax-based growth. Our referendum market value grew about 5.8%, which is pretty typical over the last couple of years. But our net tax capacity grew about 8.1%, which is more significant than we've seen in the last several years. So on a $250,000 home, the average taxpayer would see about a 7% reduction or $128, with the very important caveat that this is assuming that their taxable market value stayed the same, which is extremely uncommon. Most of us are very aware that your taxable market value increases each year. So basically, if their taxable value increased 7%, their school district taxes would stay flat. So just taking that into consideration, but overall, all things held the same, it would be a decrease. That taxable market value is actually sent in the spring, so most people are already aware if their property value is increasing. But you can kind of gauge your increase on your property taxes with that 7% to kind of get a feel for where you might land. I believe that is all I have, so if you have any questions, I will gladly entertain them.
So because this is an item for individual action, let me... Is there a motion to... Wrong page. Is there a motion to certify the county auditors, the 2019 payable 2020 preliminary levy limitation and certification at the maximum authority? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? By Rob. Okay. Questions or comments? No?
I think it should be gratifying to the voters to see that in all the categories of the type of the property, the difference between 2019 and 2020 went down in every category.
Yep.
Very unusual. And thank you... Thank the voters. Thanks to properties for going up in value so that can happen.
Now, could you just also explain the change in the ag tax credit?
Sure. Yep. The ag tax credit was, is this the second or third year? Was basically a 40% reduction for ag properties due to the way that they're taxed a little bit differently for bonds versus referendums. It's a way to kind of help offset that cost. And the legislature actually increased that this past year, so it will be 50% this year. And I believe it's tiered up to 70%. That was right off the top of my head, so that was good. So that will be phased in over the next two years, I believe. So, but right now it'll be 50% instead of 40%, so an additional reduction for ag properties.
And that difference in revenue comes to us directly from the state, correct?
Yep. We get state aid to cover that difference.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Val, for the very detailed report. It all makes a lot of sense, as much as the complex nature of school finance financing can make sense. I'm sorry, Rob, did you have a... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's... Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, you guys keep me just... Excellent. For some reason, I was thinking that we're voting finally if we... Yeah, okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Hat's in that. So we will go on to our next item for individual action, which is the area learning center FTE request. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so I have a proposal for you this evening that we try to do on a very limited basis, where we bring a funding proposal to you for action in the same evening. We try to reserve that for areas where we think it's something that we need to respond to in a very timely manner, and this is one of those situations. And it's also a situation where, when we hear talking about very slight initial enrollment declines year over year, where throughout parts of the system, that doesn't always play out exactly right when we're hearing the levy, we're hearing about the overall system. And tonight, we're going to talk about something specific to the area learnings. And I'm going to ask area learning center director Darrell Keller to come to the mic just to answer questions after I share the few updates here. But what we are requesting from you is an additional .63 FTE to address capacity issues at the area learning center. And as you all know, our area learning center has a regional reputation of excellence. It was the Minnesota Alternative Programs Program of the Year just a few years ago in 2017. As you know, it's a caring staff. They've got some very intentional protocols to support students who qualify through one of 11 different qualifying factors. I put 12 in, but it's actually 11. Darrell had corrected me afterwards, and it's got a high-quality curriculum. And as you know, the genius of the ALC is to ensure really small class sizes and a small family environment to really support students who qualify in one of these... Is it 11 or 12? I said 12.
There are 12, but two of them are metro-specific, so we really only have 10.
So there's 10 different areas where they can qualify. Now, I included in your package just showing the enrollment changes that we have seen this year, and I've given you an analysis of the past four school years, apples to apples, right around the same time of the year. So you'll see that normally what happens is we have a lower enrollment at the area learning center to begin with the year, and then the enrollment grows as time goes on. But what you're going to see here is that last year at this time, we had 58 students enrolled, and now we have 82 at roughly the same time this fall. And actually, we have an additional five students who are scheduled to begin during the second grading period on October 2nd. You might recall that the area learning center has very short grading periods, so that, for example, a student who might qualify for their attendance, even if they've had a... if they've regressed in their attendance, they can still come back and earn some credit so that it's not like a regular quarter where I get behind, maybe I shouldn't even come the rest of the quarter because I can't get any credits. It's part of the way that we do credit recovery. And you'll see that four of those students are eligible for EL services. This is not a typographical error, that the school's English learners population, which is one of those 10 qualifiers, has increased by 90% since 2017. And I made sure I was doing the calculation correctly because when we look at just how few English language learners we had attending the ALC just two years ago to what we have today, it is incredibly... It's really changed. Now, we're at about 36% of the area learning center population eligible for English language learner requirements. Now, please do.
So just as a clarification, we're now just over 40% of unofficial EL students. And so what that means is, the reason I put the unofficial in there, is on the home questionnaire language, that's part of the registration, if they check in a language other than English spoken in the home or understood or spoken commonly in the home, that is the first round of identifying EL learners. And then what that then does is it goes into a screener. So then they take a screener to see if they officially qualify as an EL learner. And so right now, we have a fair number of students that have 41% that have checked that, yes, there's a language other than English most commonly spoken in the home. And so now we're going through, and we have a .2 EL teacher right now that's super busy getting all those screeners to all those students, as many as we can, as fast as we can, just so we can qualify them officially, see where they're at with levels, and then place them accordingly into the right program and support that they need. And so it's unofficial right now because we're still in the process of qualifying students, but it right now stands unofficially at 41%. And it could increase with the new students that are waiting for October 1st. It'll most likely go above that, too.
Yes. Good jump in, Darrell, whenever you need because we're tag teaming this. So again, there's also a cascading impact because of the fact that we have that many more students to begin the year. What Darrell reports to me is that the environment has become busier. And so Darrell's reporting that some longer-term area learning center students who have really valued that very tight-knit family piece are experiencing some increases in anxiety as that demographic component changes a bit in terms of just having that many more students at the school. And so we just have a fear that that will then begin to impact the attendance. Right? We work so hard to get a trusting relationship with students. I'll remind you that just not too long ago, a survey of the ALC students, where 100% of the students felt that they were safe and supported at the school. So there's really multiple dimensions to this. It's a wonderful problem to have, right? I mean, we're so thankful that students look at the Northfield Area Learning Center and say, that's a place that can really help me, you know, achieve my goals and graduate high school. We all know the ALC graduation is one of our favorite events of the year because it really shows what personalization is about. But we've just had this initial rush of people at the beginning of the year that we have not ever experienced before. So what we're proposing is that while we love the increase of, you know, with an EL licensed teacher, those folks don't grow on trees, and to get someone for a very part-time basis would be very challenging. So in our analysis of the situation, we have two part-time area learning center staff members who would be able to add an additional, basically an additional period to their schedule to be able to, again, push students out over just another couple of classes during those class periods, bring those class sizes down just a little bit more to be able to provide that, again, that atmosphere that we're striving for at the area learning center and supporting those students whose language is something other, their home language is something other than English, regardless whether they choose to accept those EL services or not. I do also want to share with you that this may be step one of some other steps that we're seeing at our secondary buildings together. This is the first step that we're taking after a combined meeting of the area learning center and the high school, specific to an increase, a pretty substantial increase, and a changing profile, if you will, of English language learners. So we're starting to see some students who don't have the same background knowledge due to their refugee status, where the previous EL students we've had had at least had some formal schooling in their home country. But we're starting to see an uptick in students from more foreign populations where they don't even have the school experience. And so EL teachers will talk to you about transference, you know, to be able to transfer, you know, the skills or the things that they learned in one language into another. And just the demographic change that we're seeing this year, our students, because of the really horrific conditions in their home country, never really had an opportunity for formal schooling. So it creates another layer of support that is needed for EL students. So this request is probably one of a couple, and I just want to share that with you upfront. But we look at this as, as you know, working with you for a decade and being part of these kinds of requests even before being the superintendent, you know that we don't bring something to you and ask you for action at the same meeting unless we think it's a pretty essential request. And so Darrell, do you have anything to add to how I phrased this thing?
No. So just for clarification, too, so Dr. Hillman was talking about the two periods. So right now, the ALC best practice is to have 15 students in a class at a time or less. Traditionally, we've been 10 to 12 pretty consistently. Every once in a while, we get to 15, but not consistently. We're right now, several classes in our independent study classes, every period of the day for independent studies over 20. And our seat-based classes, they have 16, 17, pretty common, pretty consistent throughout. And so what this will do is I'll be able to add a section for second hour and for third hour. And so those 16, 17s, I'll have more sections to divvy the students out. And so then the class sizes will get back into that best practice range. And so that's the big thing, because as Dr. Hillman pointed out, we're still at that slightly over 50% of our students qualify with a mental health diagnosis of anxiety, depression. And so we have a fair number of students that have talked to staff members about how many students there are and how the anxiety is affected by a room full of people. And I say that from the ALC point of view because our full of people is different than another building's full of people and perceived differently by our students. And so it is a matter of perspective, but I think it's also worth valuing their perspective in that because it is feeling to them like this is getting pretty big and out of control. And so we're just trying to, this will help tremendously by just increasing those two periods, then I can start to spread out those really big classes that we have.
I'd also like to point out, too, just briefly, that one of the things that we also look at with our area learning center students is how, Darrell mentioned that there are 10 areas that students can qualify in. And right now, as of the data that we had last week, the average number of qualifiers per student at the area learning center to start this year is 3.57. I'm just going to read the categories for you because I think that's important. So it could be that they're below grade level in some academic area, that they're behind in credits, they're pregnant or a parent, chemically dependent, they were expelled, they were referred by a district, they've experienced physical or sexual abuse, mental health concerns, homelessness, EL chronically truant or treated in... health concerns, homelessness, EL chronically truant or treated in a hospital. You know, so we're not talking about criteria that are surface-level kinds of things. And we have students in, in most of those areas except for referred by the district. That's the only area that I see that we don't have anyone qualifying in so far. But I will just read that, you know, we have 76 students behind in credits, we have 18 students chemically dependent, we have six students who have experienced physical or sexual abuse, we have 43 students who qualify with the mental health qualifier, six students identify as homeless, six students homeless in Northfield, Minnesota, and then 33 under EL, 44 under chronically truant, which the chronically truant is a clear, in my mind, is a clear result of some of these other components. And so this program is literally making a difference in a student's outcome. So when we're, when we're talking about, I would, when we have upper 30s in some of our high school classes, which we know, but we're talking about, you know, students in an environment where the average number of qualifiers is 3.57, we know it works, and we're asking, you know, to, you authorize us to just give Darrell a little bit of additional help to begin the year.
Excellent. Questions, comments? We're moving to the staff.
Thanks for your presentation. I'm sure we have many, whatever, however we categorize these individuals, but I mean, on the, on the homeless piece, what intervention do we have for these six people? And are there sponsor families, or, you know, what, what do we do?
Yep, so the, the one thing that, the key in the Northfield Union of Youth that has really done a lot of work with the Host Home program, we have a partnership with them, so they're doing, they're operating as they normally have, but one of the key staff members comes to the ALC every afternoon except Wednesdays, and is helping with things where if we hear of a student that's couch surfing or sleeping in their car, which does happen, then we can connect them with the key and say, "They have a Host Home program that they've been building and developing over the last several years." And so then they are able to find a safe place for that student to go. And so that has helped tremendously, because just a few years ago, our social worker was understandably really frustrated because there wasn't any options at all in the area when there was a student that didn't have a place to go. And so now, we have that as a huge option, and it's helped quite a few students in that it's more of a short-term plan that they have right now, so they don't want to have it kind of a four-year, you can stay in that Host Home while you finish. But it's helped a lot of students in that immediate need, where they're, like I said, sleeping in their car or not having a place to stay each night.
Other questions or comments? I had a question as where ideally or where the maximum number of students we can have at the ALC?
So that's a wonderful question. So going with that best practice number of 15 per class size, we often have four sections in each hour, and so dividing or multiplying, however you want to look at it, 15 times four, you look at 60 students in the seat base kind of as maximum. So we have, we're right now above that, and if you include the independent study, we're way above that. And so it's really starting to, every aspect of the program is feeling this pinch of increase, like our support staff, as Dr. Hillman just pointed out, like all the qualifiers, we still have all those qualifiers. And so now, with more students, all of our support staff is really struggling to try and get to all the students, because we pride ourselves on meeting every single student and seeing what things, what supports we can help with those. And just with the sheer numbers of people that we have, that's tougher. And so we're, we're still trying to get to all those things, but independent study, as big as it's getting, we're meeting, you know, I just met with Carrie Duba, because we're still partnering with the high school, and talking through things as we're having challenges and they're having challenges, and trying to fine-tune those things. But it's a cascading effect where, you know, with the English language increase, the independent study increase, the seat base increase, all these pulls on our resources, it's really tough to try and balance those and still meet the needs of all the students that are in the program. And that's, that is our goal, is to not let anyone slip through the cracks and to meet all the students in our program.
And then, within the confines of, of the physical space at the ALC, is there, you know, is, is there room? Are you running out of space?
We are, we have ran out of space a while ago, so we have a lot of shared offices. We have two or three people in each nook and cranny that we can find classrooms. We're doing, we're going to be doing with this increase, a little bit of shared classroom, which works. It's not ideal, but it will work. But yeah, we're, we're...
And so that means that on someone's prep period, somebody else comes into, it's not like two classes are in the same room at the same time.
Right.
During someone's prep period, when they would normally be planning in their own space. They may still plan in their own space, but there's going to be a class in there.
Yep. Yep. And that's, you know, it's not ideal, but it definitely will work.
Okay. Jeff, you have a question?
And then, what's our timeline for Longfellow?
Yeah, so Longfellow, we, it's actually in the construction update here, Jeff, coming just up, but we actually just had our first core planning meeting for Longfellow, and Darrell was there. We have an intent. There is a room on the second floor where the area learning center is that does support some, my itinerary and staff typically focused on early childhood special education, that we anticipate moving over to the Greenville Park Early Childhood Center, giving the area learning center another classroom, which would be very helpful.
Yep, it'd be fantastic.
But that's not until next year, yeah?
And part of the, kind of the immediacy of this is not only is it growing, as Dr. Hillman said, we have, our next grading period starts a week from Wednesday, from this coming up Wednesday. And so I'd like to do the scheduling, I'm working on the scheduling, actually, right now. I'd like to have that planned for, for a week from now, basically. And that's kind of the immediacy of this, is that it's, there are still students, I have two more students scheduled for Wednesday for an intake, and so the, the numbers are not stopping, there's still, but this allows us to not close the doors and say, "No, we're full of this." Gives us a little bit more breathing room, too, that not only can we help the students that are there, but we can take, because one of the side effects, which is really, really unfortunate, which I don't want to have happen, is that some of the students at the high school that are looking for ALC services, now that we're as full as we are, are saying, "Well, can I get into the ALC because it's so full?" And I don't want that to happen for students in our district. I want that to be an option for them, too. And so this really helps with keeping that option open.
Excellent. And I think you make a very strong case for why this is an immediate need. So we, we do, we do have a motion.
No, we do not.
We do not? Okay. Julia, I need to correct.
No, we, this is longer when we do a presentation like this, so...
Okay, yes. So let's ask for a motion. Is there a motion to increase a total of .63 FTE at Northfield, Northfield Area Learning Center? Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Noel. Okay, any additional questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darrell, for the great work you're doing. And again, I appreciate bringing, we appreciate bringing this forward, because indeed, you got clearly there.
Thank you very much.
The need to respond. Thank you. So that does conclude tonight's items for individual action. We can move on to items for information. Dr. Hillman will present construction update number 14.
Yeah, I think the key things that you can see from September, as I just mentioned, we've started the core planning group processes for both the Longfellow School renovation and for the Greenville Park, the existing Greenville Park renovation. We also have had a chance to move forward with the second set of Sibley Elementary addition renovation 3D views and what they call the material palette, materials palette meeting, that's picking paint and carpet and all of that very exciting stuff. And we'll get an update from Wold in the next couple of, probably in the next month here, because the bids will be due on October 15th. And as you know, we have a special board meeting on October 21 to authorize those. We are still seeing the construction here at Bridgewater Elementary. As you can, as you know, that looks like it's going very well. The new Greenville Park construction camera is installed and operational. If you want to have fun, go on that site. Right now, it's a lot of dirt moving. And as you remember, we had a very special ceremony on September 10th at the Greenville Park, new elementary and that groundbreaking. I was very proud of that student-centered event. So thank you for all of your participation in making sure that the event was focused on the children, so that they've got something that they can remember for the rest of their lives. So that's your construction update for September 23rd, 2019.
Questions or comments? So I was looking at the report, and it's been such a valuable report, but I wondered if we should, maybe in the interest of cost-saving, keep the report to just one page?
Yep.
And then take off some of the past updates by month? Maybe just stay with the current one or two months to keep it to one page, because we do know that this information is available on the website for anyone to have access to it. And it's, again, moved to the front page of the district website with a construction update tab. So if the board is amenable to just having Anita give us a one-page document?
And I think we'll continue to post the full document on the website, but just for the purpose of what's printed in the board.
For the, for the purpose of board review at meetings.
Anytime we get print lists, that's a good thing.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, so exciting things, and again, thanks, thank you to Wold and Knutson and Anita and Dr. Hillman and everyone who was involved with the groundbreaking ceremony. It was just really such a fun evening, and so many kids there. It was great. I think Knutson had 200 plastic hats, and we were getting worried that we were going to run down. So I suspect there'll be a lot of construction workers for Halloween this year.
Yes.
I kept saying to parents, "And guess what? You got the Halloween costume on, ready to go." So anyway, that was just a really great, and the weather could not have been more perfect.
My favorite part was the probably three or four, what were most likely fourth graders who brought their own shovels. And they were asking, "How do we get..." I mean, I think they thought they were going to go in and start tearing the place up, but of course, it was ceremonial in nature, so that was fun.
Yes, it was truly excellent. Okay, so then, we also have World's Best Workforce coming up in that presentation, Dr. Hillman.
Yes, this is just a heads up, that we will be holding the annual World's Best Workforce report, which if you remember, that's a hearing that's before a regular board meeting, that's how we do it. That will be coinciding with the second board meeting in October at 6:15 PM here. So, you know, board members will ask you to come here at 6:15 PM. Director of Teaching and Laurie Mary Grace Hans, then Director of Assessment Services, Hope Langston, will present the annual update to the World's Best Workforce report. There'll be a chance for questions for members of the public or from board members at that time, but then we'll have another portion of the meeting where you can actually ask questions as well. So it's a little bit of a World's Best Workforce evening, I suppose. That might draw people in.
Excellent. Okay. Any questions on the World's Best Workforce presentation? Okay. So future meetings, we do have, with the, with the calendar is following, we have a bit of a break. Our next board meeting is not till Monday, October 14th. Dr. Hillman mentioned the Monday, October 21st, 5:00 PM special board meeting, in which we will approve Sibley bids, so that can, that project can move forward and groundbreaking in November. And then, the last board meeting in October is October 28th. We will convene as World's Best Workforce presentation at 6:15, followed by the regular school board meeting at 7:00 PM. And all of those meetings are in the Northfield High School Media Center. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Excellent. Good work.